All right, good afternoon or evening. And it's 6:30 PM and this workshop session of Louisville City Council is now called to order. We do have a quorum. First item up on the agenda is discussion of the consent and regular agenda items, council. If you could pull up your agendas. I have council member Kristen Green doing the invocation. Councilor Troyer, would you mind backfilling that for us?
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Protem, Patrick Kelly, got you for the pledges. Let's see here. So first up, item C1, recognition of our outgoing board and commission committee members. We have, I think, four folks that have said that they're going to be attending for that. Item 2, presentation of appointment certificates to our new board and commission committee members and Minister of the Office. We're going to do this one board at a time, so everybody will come up as a board at a time, and then we'll do board members as a group with the mayor and council as a panel. Thomas, are you expecting us to be sitting up at the dais or do you want to stand in front?
Whatever you want, more comfortable with. Sorry. If you could be in the well and the council behind you, what kind of the dais would you find?
Yeah, he may want to, yeah, we can stand up. That way we don't have a bunch of this, or Kilroy was here, look.
Yeah.
Perfect.
One guy with his Chinese sign, you know, why are you leaving?
All right, item D1, public hearing. Zone change from general business to light industrial?
I did want to tell you, mention that this is the zoning that will, at the next meeting, I believe next meeting or the meeting after, we'll have an SCP that's coming for this use. Also note that I know there's queuing that right now happens along the feeder road, but there, Tech dot's ultimate plan is to add another lane there, so there will be two full lanes open and a lane that the queuing would happen, and that's generally Tech dot won't allow D cell lanes if they're building a three lane.
Okay. Super. Any questions on D1? D2, allocation of home investment partnership program funds?
Can somebody explain this a little bit more, it's a little confusing on, what exactly is the money you're getting from this, and what do we use this for?
So, we will bring it back to you on the actual use, so like of home funds. This is just accepting the home fund, so we'll be able to take this. It's basically like CDVG funds, so we will now get an allocation that comes directly to us. Rather than before, we used to have to, we had to apply and compete with others at the state level to get home funds. So this is, this is a great change for us, where we will automatically be able to count on those funds coming in every year, but they have to be spent on affordable housing. There are some set-asides that are related to what they call community development housing organizations, TOTOS, and that's a set aside for their admin work, but really the idea of having looked at the housing plan that we have, we have a lot of initiatives we've done with high density, multifamily that are affordable, but we've really not focused and had the ability to focus on some of the lower density, like townhomes and single-family rehabs and things like that, and this would allow us that opportunity to be able to work on that, but we would bring that back to you.
And that's about what dollar per year? We can, what was that, was that the hundred and?
Five hundred.
Five, so it's five hundred?
Five hundred thousand a year.
Just this first year.
Just this first year.
Where it'll be about dinner, coin five dollars.
Okay. Are the projects chosen and worked through staff and approved by council, or do they go through CDVG, or how do they function?
We will eventually go through our CBG advisory committee like every other, our CBG funding, but this first year we'll do a staffed council, but everything will come through council with our projects.
Okay. Any other questions? I think it's great. I really appreciate flawed staff for getting to the point where we have the bandwidth to do this. I know for many years, this has been one of those things where we just did not have the institutional bandwidth to take this on and make sure that happened, because there are lots of screens attached to these dollars, so we want to make sure that they get spent the way they're supposed to. All right, consent agenda. We have minutes. F3. F4, change order to construction manager at risk contract?
We're sure we don't need any more than 1.5 million or something else?
Well, the problem, this is just a reduction in the GMP for Burn. The project also has additional costs, so Jim is going to go and the team is going to go through this. So we feel confident, trust me. I've got Chris Squatter here in this office, who is my most conservative extension of staff, and he's saying we can release this. The answer is I feel very confident we can.
Item G5, regular hearing, alternative standard related to screening for Hillside Office Park.
Question about that, so I noticed they're going to put up the hedges. So what's, do we check on them, that those hedges are actually coming to the height that we want them at in future years? Is that?
Yes, we'll, planning staff will inspect at planting to make sure they're the right type of variety, and then our code enforcement staff will assist us in monitoring them at.
Item G6, variance to city code fee schedule. This is Battle of the Badge. Chief, we're going to be competitive this year, right?
Yes, we are.
Item 7, take action ordinance for bonds, Series 2024, for 27 million.
Yeah, Mayor, on 7 and 8, we have Jason Hughes somewhere, so there we are, and Julie is right here, but I would like Jason just to explain to you what the parameters ordinance does for both of these, and generally the parameters we're asking you guys to approve tonight, and then if you have any questions, come be here.
Okay. Mayor and council, good to be here with you again tonight. So as Ms. Powell said, we are asking for your approval for a parameter ordinance for your issuance of the general obligation bonds, as well as for the water and sewer revenue bonds. And so on the GO bonds, those parameters are EIC or the true interest cost, the interest rate, if you will, the average interest rate, 4.75 percent, maximum principal amount of just over $27 million, and then these will be a 16-year repayment, as you normally do on your GO bonds. On the water and sewer side, 4.75 percent again for the rate, just over 16.3 million for the par amount, the maximum par amount, and then once again, it's a 16-year repayment. So the nice thing is, assuming your approval, once we have the official statement, which is the offering document that we use to market and sell the debt, once that's done, once we get the credit ratings, and we do have rating meetings next week with S and P and Fitch in person here at the city on Monday and Tuesday, once we get those credit ratings from then, then we can move forward at any time. So it just provides us the maximum flexibility. Again, this is something that we've asked for your approval, and you've given in the past, and so it's not a departure from anything that we've done. So we're happy to give you more details as you'd like.
Counsel?
I just wanted to let you guys know that in your backup in the report section, we have attached a report related to kind of the general plan for the tranches we're going to sell for the next 10 years of debt, just so that you can see the timing on projects. Those things are very variable, but we have crafted that to address, you know, maintaining a steady tax rate, also to ensure that our staff, if we have a lot of projects that we're still working on, in some departments, maybe we're loading up another department that has more capacity, so we're making sure we're dealing with staffing levels on things as well, and then also needs in the community. So those are all three things we think we've adjusted for in that schedule.
But that, again, is not in stone.
That is not in stone.
That document is a flexible document.
Yes.
All right. With no questions, thank you, guys. Appreciate you being here. That's item 7. Item 8 is the same for water and sewer. Item 9, amendment to fee schedule for municipal court credit card convenience fees. I think we have the judge here to answer any questions if need be. There he is. Usually you're hiding in the corner over here.
I am, but I, we wanted to present a united front.
So, judges, quick summary, or team, what are we looking at? Is, are we changing a payment system? How did that work?
So this would be specifically in the jail, when payments are coming in from defendants, primarily from outside agencies. So if someone's arrested and is taken to our jail and another city's warrants, it allows them to make a credit card payment directly to that city, essentially through this third-party company, rather than going through our finance department. Our finance department happened to kind of check back out to the other city.
That's great.
So it eliminates that delay. It's guaranteed funds, so once the payment's made, we don't have to worry about charge backs or anything like that.
Great. So, yeah, we're out of the middle. That's great. All right. Item 10, consideration of five appointments at city's 2425 Charter Review Commission. We did have a list, but that is not an end-all, be-all, so we can have that conversation out on the dais. Has anybody got any comments or questions about that one?
Just a point is that we have to choose, the charter sets five, five only, so it's not less or more, it has to be five. So you have, you have a lot of people that are on this list, so you're.
It's a good list to, very strong list.
Very strong list.
Yeah, we have nine or 10 on that list.
Thank you.
Nine.
Nine.
Nine. Okay. So, there you go. So, nine enter, five leave.
I'm a little, I'm a little.
Regardless, we've got great candidates on that list, so. Item H, reports. So we have the project capital funding timeline, and then any city council and staff reports. We do not have any closed session this evening?
No.
All right. There are no further questions on the agenda?
One question on the funding report. When do we anticipate the fire station and the floor land?
Land to be purchased. I think the first, that's part of our first sale.
Yeah, which I saw.
So we would, then as soon as we get the cash in hand, start looking for the property.
All right, we'll go ahead and move into workshop session, item B, Tittle-McFadden Public Safety Center update. We have Jim Proche, Chris Presley, Chris Sweet, Bill Morrow, Mr. James Kunkie. We've got a whole team here.
That's right. And it takes a whole team to do a project like this, and before we get started, I just want to say, it's been an honor and privilege to be part of this project. I came in here, bid package five, when we hit the notice to proceed, and it's been, it's been a runaway freight train, man, and it's been a wild ride, and I've been enjoying every second of it, and a great team. So I want to give them the opportunity to talk about what this has meant to them and some of the things that we have going forward. Basically, we're going to go over this real quick, because we only have, I have 400 slides, but I'm going to jam them in. Budget, schedule, project status, some highlights, what's next, talk a little bit about the change order, and then if you have any questions, there's any time left. But, basically, the folks talking tonight, like you said, Chris, all the Chris's, and Chris Squatter sitting in the back here in case we have some really tough questions. So, first off, we'll go with the budget, real simple. Lot of the marketplace risk is already being taken care of. We passed a lot of that on to subcontractors, doing really, really well. It's one of the reasons you're going to see the pending change order, which is not going to be pending for long, I hope, for 1.5 million. Temporary facilities, there's no report, around $5 million, $39 for the parking support and support building and site work. And where I came into the project was, bid package five, was a little over $59 million for a total of 103, we're reducing that by 1.5 million. I'm not going to read all this, you have this in your packet, all the different steps, but where we are today is July, we have the change order to reduce the GMP. We'll be coming back in August about the 1955, the temporary facility lease extension, and projected construction completion for quarter four this year. There's the weather delays, that'll be handled by staff, it's not, it's not a cost impact. Basically, it's a no-cost change order, and then looking for project relocation for the first quarter of 2025. We may have some other change orders that will come with time and stuff like that, but we're still working through some of those items. Basically, I'm going to stop talking, because I'll talk all night, and I'm going to pass this over to Chris and let him talk.
Yeah, and I have one of the mini Chris's on this project, so thank you for having me. This is an example of an update that we did to the city of Louisville. We have these posted, I'm sure you've seen up front, in the council chambers. We also have one at the annex and the library as well. So this is our site, this is our, I'm sorry, I don't.
Yep, I can move to.
So this is our site, this is what we, where we are currently today. This was a drone video that was taken last Wednesday. Again, we're working towards substantial completion with the support building and parking garage that's in the back. We actually had an internal pre-punch walk, where we go through and see any kind of mistakes or anything that was made to point out to the general contractor, and that went really good. A lot of our city folks were really impressed on where we're at with this project. Continuing though, we still have a lot of mill work that we've got to get done, low-voltage wire, all the HVACs have been installed, and we'll see a picture of one in a second. One great thing is that we are installing three EV chargers in this complex, this whole site. So we have one in the parking garage, we have one in the library parking lot, and then we have one kind of tucked in back here for electric vehicles in the future. We also have the infrastructure in place to add more as we, as we grow and as we need to. So that's very neat. We also worked with TNMP and their city smart program, and we have given them all of our submittals for electrical, HVAC, and lighting. And to put it in context, we did this for the lower level as well, and we're saving, you know, over 8,000 kilowatt hours a year. We got a nice bid check from TNMP for $735, but this is money that we're saving. But with this, you know, 300,000 square foot complex, we're looking at seeing some major savings. So that's, that's a neat, neat process that we're going through. So we thought it'd be neat to show you kind of the renderings that we all agreed on and where we're kind of at today. This is kind of the front of the building. We got the parking garage, where we're at today, again, with the sky bridge, so kind of see what we, what it will look like and where we're at today. The sky bridge is really neat. I threw a couple of those in there, it's kind of my favorite part of the project. When in design, it was brought to council to have these lanterns that are on top of the building, and at nighttime, the lights from the police office and the fire admin will light these lanterns, and you'll be able to see them from the road. So that's a picture of one, and again, one of our HVAC units that's, they're all installed, we're testing and balancing right now. So, moving very quickly, like he said, I think that was a perfect example of runaway train, but we're working on it. Now, the best Chris of the group has come on.
Nice.
We'll talk about the fire station. It's starting to look like a firehouse. It's really close to being completed. Of course, you see the rendering there, and then we have the actual drone footage, so it's pretty close to what it was intended to look like. This is the apparatus bay, so the cool thing about this station is the apparatus, the front, has roll-up security gates that allows us to still have ventilation in the bay and keep it nice and cool, and the air coming through, but still keep the area secure, and keeping the whole complex secure. And then behind those doors will be some bifold, the actual apparatus bay doors, and those are quick opening gates, I think they open in about six, seven seconds, and same with the bifold doors. The cool, one other neat kind of feature is in this fire station is we did a blue color on the ceiling, and studies have shown in other states, other cities have used it, that it keeps the number of spider webs and everything else from trying to accrue up there in the ceiling, because it thinks it's the sky, so it's a kind of a tizzle. This is the day room part, the day room where the guys hang out during the downtime. It's kind of a needle area with some stadium seating, so everybody can see the television. This is the kitchen and dining area, so main kitchen area here, and then the cook area back there, and then there'll be a big dining table right there in the middle. And this is a picture of one of the, one of the station bathrooms, and also one of the firefighter sleeping rooms. This is our EMS main storage. These are all rolling cabinets, so we can utilize every bit of space and maximize the amount of storage that we can do in this facility. Extractors, these are where we can wash our bunker gear after fires and incidents. We'll also have, back there in the corner, will be a drying rack that'll actually dry the gear in a short amount of time, so they could get put back into service. This is the front apron of the apparatus bay. It's a really cool stone, I like what they, I like what everything was chosen for this building. This is a storage area above the bay, that we can store old extra bunker gear, tools and equipment, and everything like that. The other neat thing about this is there's actually a manhole up there that we could do some rough training through from the first level down to the second level.
Brought a Chris's, so now we're to a bill. I won't mention how the fire department went with blue ceiling. I won't mention that. This is a great project, and really excited to be part of it, and it's been great working with the team. There's a lot to go over, and there were so many pieces and parts, so I just grabbed a couple quick little things to kind of see, but this kind of is closer to that rendering picture that Chris showed, of what the front entrance and our joint lobby will look like, and that'll be the entrance way. This is just a picture of our property room. Now, the construction site this big is working in a lot of different stages, so the fire department is furthest along, as you saw by their pictures, and the support building, which is that 20,000 square feet tucked under the parking garage, that's the second furthest along, and then the police-fire-admin building is the third. Such a huge project, they just kind of have to work their way around it. So this is actually in the property room, our property room vault, which is spectacular. Don, who's built hundreds of these, raves over this, he's really proud of this. No other city has a property room like this that doesn't have a separate building, so this is pretty fantastic. And everything in the support building is getting all the shelving right now, and everything kind of to that stage. Another part I'm really excited about is our Faraday room. We actually have a Faraday room. We don't have a system really in place very well. What's a Faraday room? Well, it blocks all the, all the connection to the cell phones, and that's important in our world, because now you can remotely go and clean off your phone and do some of those things, and we like that stuff for evidence. So now we have a system in place where we actually have a Faraday box in the property and evidence, it has bags, those bags are portable, detectives can actually go into this room, and there will be a computer in there, and they can start downloading, which might take multiple hours. They can connect it, start downloading it, and leave it, and never have to worry about anybody accessing those phones till we get what we want. And that's a big upgrade from what we're currently doing, you know, tinfoil and all those cool things we try. This works really, really well. Here's again another picture of, in our support building, and we have a SWAT room, and it's kind of exciting, because we've never had anything quite like this. We are so spread out with SWAT and multiple rooms and multiple buildings in the city, and no more than now, we are, police departments spread out all over the place. This is really exciting to have a place for our emergency response team to have all their equipment, to be able to brief and to train, and so a pretty exciting piece there. The most intricate thing that we're doing, and the space station that we're building is really for dispatch. It is spectacular, and the upgrades there aren't great, this state-of-the-art stuff here. So really, really good stuff. We have 12 consoles in the middle, we have two of our supervisor consoles down here, we have some training consoles over here, and the three chairs over there are call-takers. It's an expansion for bigger than what we have, a much better product than what we have. This will be the last thing built, also because it's the most complicated to really get everything to part, but dispatch is currently functioning just fine, and so we can actually move in, have no disruption in service, and slowly trickle our way over there. See if I can get this to play. There is a drone video. I don't know if I'll get that.
Sure.
So, BRW, the architect group, and Burn, they do a drone once a month, Julie usually around. So this is the drone video of it spinning around that you get to see. Pretty exciting to see this product. While that's spinning, I'll try to remember the next two slides and talk a little bit about them, since we don't have a ton of time. There's still a lot more going on, both of us said there's a lot more pieces and parts. So we can say the support building is function, I mean, it's really moved along, but there's a lot of exterior work that still needs to be done, a lot of grading, there's some decorative concrete, and some of those things still have to come into play. The furniture package is a big part of that, and that's a huge process, a lot of furniture goes in 116,000 square feet, and so, thank you. So we have all that. Most of, all the mill work probably is already set up in the support building, all the cabinetry and all that, but the, the main police-admin building, they haven't started, and they can't start until the AC is set up and all that, so that'll be several weeks out. You'll notice even in here that none of these windows are in in the upper, upper part. Those are ballistic windows, we're waiting for them to come in, there's been a little bit of delay, some of them come out of Houston, and some of Houston's underwater, so, but in the next two weeks or so, those should be landing and being installed, and that'll be one step closer to getting AC. So mill work and all that can start happening. Again, a lot of different stages going on here, where it is, what's being painted, what's being sheet rocked. Most everything is actually all sheet rocked right now, 90% of it is, and some parts in the lower section are actually painted already, and waiting for some mill work. Can you X me out of there? I'm mostly done talking, so I'll just make sure I didn't miss anything. Keep going, keep going, keep going. Perfect. So that's kind of, there's a lot of different stages, and he already talked about the EV parking, and I'm going to turn artwork.
Thank you. I'm trying to become a Chris, but my application was denied. So before we were, a couple months ago, we brought to you the conceptual drawings and renderings for the sculpture that'll be placed in front of the Tittle-McFadden Public Safety Center. These are two of the drawings here. Daytime, it'll look very silvery like that, nighttime, LED lights will rotate through colors through the night, so it'll be an attraction both day and night. Three very quick points for you, since we have very short time. We are on schedule with this fourth of the project to try and install it and unveil it, concur with the opening, the public opening of the building. People will move in earlier, but we hope to unveil the sculpture and the building to the public at the same time, or as close as we can. The second thing is, we have made a few adjustments, you know, the artist has great ideas, and the engineers and architects and builders are going to say, hey, you can't do that. So we've made a few adjustments on the scale, the height is exactly the same, and the aperture through the middle is still 48 inches, so that we can still have people going through. There were some ADA adjustments to the site, for instance, little bumps or ridges along the edge, so that someone who is vision impaired with a cane will just walk into the edge of the sculpture, if there's a notice there. But it's also why we're not going to be able to fold these down into benches as we had thought we might, because if you do that, there's a whole lot of ADA requirements that we will not be able to meet and still have the artwork be an artwork. So those are the two things. And then, as I go to the last slide, which shows it at night again, one of the things that's going to be part of this, of course, is words carved in, two words and phrases carved into the sculpture. The artist was here during Color Palooza, did some public engagement, got some great inputs, great ideas, held a session with police and fire, got some input. We are going to have a third phase, that's an online, it's probably going to start by the end of the month-ish, but very soon. It'll last a couple of weeks, give people another chance. The artists will compile and categorize those for us, they'll come back to us, ultimately the city will get to pick. Now, one thing we're toying with right now, and she's done this in some other cities, we're very much a multicultural, multilingual city. If you look through the school district, our top five languages, English, Spanish, Chin, Korean, Vietnamese. What she has done in some cities is, the majority are still English, but there's going to be those other languages mixed in here and there. It's just another way to embrace the, really the cultural diversity that we have in the city that makes us so strong. So we're excited about it, we're on schedule, and we'll have something when the building's ready.
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Non-Chris's get less time.
Non-Chris's get less time. Running out of time, wrapping up the change order. So we had a lot of early on risk of things that were averted, risk of the contaminated soil potential, right? Those things didn't happen. Subsurface, I was here when we were doing the piers and the grade beams, that was exciting, but you never know, it's unpredictable, but, you know, what you might run into, similar to what happened at Thrive. All the buyout savings on the GMP, total about a million dollars, and I thank Chris and his team for really holding all the subs and the contractors to fire by squeezing, squeezing blood out of a stone, right? And all that money reverted back to the city. Owner's contingency was used to purchase all the desired alternates, so there was a lot of alternate things that we were talking about, having the generator, Fuel Island, the wood soffits, metal detectors, things that throughout the building and throughout the facility, that we were able to fund all of them under, under our contingency. So this change order, been well vetted, to reduce the GMP by 1.5 million dollars, and I thank this team, and I wouldn't be doing justice if I didn't talk about all the other people that I didn't mention earlier, but I just didn't let them talk, or the police chief, even though he's new, he's been actively involved, the fire chief who's sitting over here, and of course, Shontae over in the corner waiting for me to say her name, because if I didn't, she's going to beat me. And of course, Chris Squatter and his team. So everybody's done a great job, I'm honored to be part of this team. Oh, and one last point. Normally, we wouldn't take a reduction to you, but the AIA contract has this, this language in here that requires us to change in either direction, whether going up or down, if it's over 50,001 penny, it's required that we bring that before you. You won't see that on, on engineering contracts in other projects that we do, so. You won't see that on engineering contracts in other projects that we do, so that's the reason why you're seeing this time. So with that, I'm done. It's 7 o'clock. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right, we are done with workshop.
All right, it is 7:02 PM. We're going to call this regular session of the Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum. First up on the agenda tonight is the invocation, and Councilmember Troyer, would you mind?
Please stand and join me in a moment of silent contemplation. Amen.
Mayor Pro Tem Kelly?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. So next up, we have a presentation regarding the recognition of our outgoing boards and commissions, committee members. All of these folks, plus the ones that haven't been able to make it tonight, have served the city well, and greatly appreciative of their time and their investment in their community. And it's always an honor to have folks that come in and are wanting to know about the city, or wanting to be involved, and then be able to step away and say, you know what, I've done my, I've done my piece, and I'm going to go stir the pot somewhere else, usually is what ends up happening. But it's always a great thing, and I fully expect every one of these folks to continue to give us input and feedback as they go about continuing to be great citizens, so really appreciate it. I'd like to take a moment to call up Chris Crawford, Kelly Stokes, Sarah Hicks, and Timothy Fields. I believe that's all I had that are coming in tonight. And Chris was Parks Board and CDBG advisories. Kelly Stokes was TERS number one. Sarah Hicks was our Arts Advisory Board, and Timothy Fields, CDBG Advisory Committee. And we've got a letter of appreciation for all of you. I cannot thank you enough, and we would, if you don't mind, we'd like to do just a little photo, so we, everybody knows who was where. Until when I can. How you been? Good to see you. Did you take a video? Well, thank you all, and we know you have free time, so expect a call. All right. Next up, we have a presentation of appointment certificates to our boards and commission committee members and to administer oaths of office. These are for inbound committee members, for all of our boards and commissions this year. So I have, let's see here, where is that list? Oh, we're going to do these, we're going to do these by board, so first up, the first board we're going to be discussing or giving certificates to tonight is our Animal Services Advisory Committee. So if you have been attached to animal services this time around, if I could have you come on up. Welcome, welcome. Awesome, awesome. I know you. So sneak up here. We just got the two tonight? No idea. All right, and Thomas, are you doing the swearing in, or swearing out? Okay, we're going to do every board. Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, ladies. Now, sorry, but you get to stand here the longest, so. Because what's going to happen is, we'll call them up each individually, then Thomas is going to do the swearing in, and then we're going to get a photo with everybody. So because you were alphabetically first, you get the longest to be, having people stare at you. Exciting. All right, next up, Arts Advisory Board. Just go this way. Go that way. It's a Texas two-step, it's all good. Next up, the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, the board with the longest name. If any are CDBG folks, don't worry, you will get sworn in at a later time if you're not here tonight. Next up, Library Board. It's generational now. Next up, Old Town Design Review Committee. Great time. It's really cool.
I've already been sworn in.
Sworn in, sworn out, all the good stuff? Okay. You're still going to have to stand here. We got to get a photo. That's, that's, that's the fun. All right, Park Board. Planning and Zoning Commission. My P and Z'ers. And last is our Zoning Board of Adjustment, ZBOA. Went up here for that one. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and hand this over to Thomas. Thomas is going to do the swearing in. I'm going to stand back there so we can get a photo with all the council behind you guys. So if you guys can kind of center up a little bit, that'd be awesome. And then, all yours. And some of the council, if you guys would stand and make your way behind, and also raise your right hands, because you guys have got reappointed to some boards as well, too. All right, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Heidi Har.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of State Report.
Of the Office of Public Safety and Public Safety.
Of the City of Louisville.
For the City of Louisville.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city.
And the Charter and the ordinances of the city.
I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm.
I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Paid.
Paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Or promised to pay.
Or promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Nor promised to contribute.
Nor promised to contribute.
Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
Or promised any public office.
Or promised any public office.
Or reward to secure my appointment.
Or reward to secure my appointment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right, thank you all. Yeah, city. At the back of your packets are oaths for you to sign, so if you'll just sign them and hand them to the guy at the front.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
And folks, you do not, you do not, I mean, those of us who sit up here at that city council, we have so much thanks to the folks that are on our boards and commissions, because without their insight, without their deep dives into these topics, it would make our job an order of magnitude harder. So thank you so much for volunteering, and we appreciate you all. All right. Next up, Item D, Public Hearing. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from general business district to light industrial district on .5785 acres legally described as portions of lots 1A and 1B, Block A, Interstate 35 North Edition, located at 2104, or 1204, North Stemmons Freeway as requested by Jason Kilpatrick, the applicant, on behalf of Bart Schott, the property owner, case 2403-3-Z. RentCo is a heavy equipment rental company that has been in operation for many years. The property owner desires to expand the business, however, the front portion of the lot is zoned at general business, which does not allow heavy equipment rental. The proposed zone change to light industrial district would make zoning consistent across the property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, six to nothing, on June 18th, 2024, and it's recommended that the city council approve the ordinances set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, is available for questions. The public hearing on this is now open. If there are no comments or questions regarding the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Council, entertain a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 0.5785 acres of land legally described as a portion of lots 1A and 1B, Block A, Interstate 35 North Edition, located at 1204 North Stemmons Freeway from general business GB district zoning to light industrial allied district zoning, correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the ordinance amendment herein made promotes the health, safety, and general welfare of the city, providing for repealer severability, a penalty, and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item D two, Public Hearing. Consideration of a resolution of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas to accept an allocation of home investment partnership program funds and adopt an amendment to the city's 2022-2026 HUD consolidated plan as required by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. On August 1st, 2022, City Council adopted the city's 2022 through 2026 consolidated plan for housing and community development. The consolidated plan only includes planning for CDBG funds, as that is the only funding source the City of Louisville receives from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. On April 4th, 2024, HUD notified the City of Louisville that our community may be eligible to become a home program participating jurisdiction in fiscal year 2024. The consolidated plan must be amended to accept home investment partnership program funds. It's recommended that the City Council approve the resolution accepting an allocation of home investment partnership program funds and adopting the amendment to the city's 2022-2026 HUD consolidated plan as set forth in the caption above. Ashley Farron, our Neighborhood Services Manager, is available for questions, and the public hearing on this is now open. If there are no comments or questions regarding this item, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution and adopt the amendment.
Move to approve the resolution, accepting an allocation of home investment partnership program funds and adopting the amendment to the city's 2022 to 2026 HUD consolidated plan as set forth in the caption above.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Council, please vote. Motion's approved, five to nothing. Item E, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stomping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. City Secretary, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
All right, thank you. Moving on, Consent Agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card, or e-comment must be filed out, filled out, and submitted to the city secretary. Do we have any speaker cards or e-commerce?
No, sir, we do not.
We have no requests from council to remove anything from the consent agenda, so council, I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Consent Agenda passes five to nothing. Item G, Regular Hearing Five. Consideration of alternative standard related to screening for a proposed service contractor on a 1.27 acre lot legally described as Hillside Office Park, Block C, Lot 10, located in, at 820 Office Park Circle, zoned at light industrial district as requested by Hunter M. Muth Land Care LLC on behalf of Nick England, England Trans Properties LLC, the property owner, case number 24-06-8-ALT STD. Land Care is a landscape service contractor proposing to operate out of 820 Office Park Circle. The business primarily functions as a lawn care service and is interested in this location as it provides an area to securely store the company fleet vehicles and trailers. Trailers are considered outdoor storage per the Unified Development Code and must be screened from any public rights of way. The business is proposing an alternative standard to use live screening behind open style fencing in lieu of an opaque fence. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended unanimous approval, six to nothing, on June 18th, 2024, and it is recommended that the city council approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption above. Mr. Richard Ludke, our planning director, is available for questions. And if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the alternative standards.
Move to approve the alternative standard as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item Six. Consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section 2-201 Fee Schedule, waiving athletic field rental fees and temporary event permit fees associated with the Battle of the Badge Charity Softball Tournament. Since 2005, the Lewisville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association has been hosting the Battle of the Badge Charity Softball Tournament. The Lewisville Police and Fire Departments and other local fire and police departments compete in a tournament to raise money for the Lewisville Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association and the winning team's favorite 501(c)(3) charity. Battle of the Badge will take place on October 12th, 2024, at Railroad Park. Associated fees for the event are estimated to be $1,570. A waiver for 100% of the fees is requested. In previous years, the city council has approved the waiver of all fees associated with the tournament, and it is recommended that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption above. Ms. Stacy Anaya, our Parks and Recreation Director, is available for questions. And council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the variance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item Seven. Consider and take action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Louisville, Texas authorizing the issuance of City of Louisville, Texas General Obligation Improvement Bonds Series 2024 in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $27,35,000, awarding the sale thereof, levying a tax in payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting provisions incident and relating to the subject and purposes of this ordinance. Staff is planning to issue approximately $27,035 million in general obligation improvement bonds this fiscal year. Authority for issuing bonds to be repaid from property taxes must be approved by voters. This authority was granted through the successful passage of the four bond propositions that were placed on the May 4th, 2024 ballot. Thank you. To allow flexibility in setting the sale date for the bonds, Hilltop Securities, the city's financial advisor, has recommended the council adopt a parameters ordinance, which will allow the city council to authorize the sale of bond obligations at a future date as long as specified parameters are met. This provides the flexibility needed to ensure the issuance is sold when most practical and economically feasible. Authority granted by the ordinance expires one year from the date of approval. Projects to be funded through this issuance include the Animal Shelter Adoption Center expansion, McKenzie-Hemery Neighborhood Rehab, Parkland acquisition, various park-related projects, and costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance providing for the issuance of City of Louisville, Texas General Obligation Bonds 2024 in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $27,35,000, awarding the sale thereof, levying a tax in payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, and an escrow or deposit agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting provisions incident and relating to the subject and purposes of this ordinance.
Council, if you'd please vote. Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item eight, consider and take action on an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Lewisville, Texas Waterworks and Sewer System Improvement Bonds, series two thousand and twenty-four, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed sixteen million, three hundred and five thousand dollars, providing for the security and for, for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, an escrow or deposit agreement, approving the official statement, and enacting other provisions relating thereto. Staff is planning to issue approximately sixteen point three oh five million in Waterworks and Sewer System Revenue Improvement Bonds this fiscal year. To allow flexibility in setting the sale date for the bonds, Hilltop Securities, the city's financial advisor, has recommended the council adopt a parameters ordinance, which will allow the city council to authorize the sale of bond obligations at a future date as long as specific parameters are met. This provides flexibility needed to ensure the issuance is sold when most practical and economically feasible. Authority granted by the ordinance expires one year from the date of approval. Planned projects to be funded through the issuance include additions and extensions to the city's Waterworks and Sewer System and costs associated with the issuance of the bonds. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, entertain a motion.
Move to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lewisville, Texas authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Lewisville, Texas Waterworks and Sewer System Revenue Bonds, series two thousand and twenty-four, in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed sixteen million, three hundred and five thousand dollars, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, an escrow or deposit agreement, approving the official zoning state, the official statement, and enacting other provisions related thereto.
Council, if you'd please vote. Item passes five to nothing. Item nine, consideration of an ordinance of the City Council amending the fee schedule of the City of Lewisville by amending fees related to municipal court credit card convenience fees, providing for a repeal or severability and an effective date declaring an emergency. The city has partnered with All Paid Incorporated to provide bond payment services. To differentiation, differentiate transaction types and their associated fees for citations and bonds, we are proposing an update to the city's fee schedule. This amendment does not affect any other city fees. Detailed information on the complete city fee schedule can be found under the Finance section of the city's website. The fee schedule repository is managed by the city manager's office. It's recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. Council, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Lewisville City Council amending the fee schedule of the City of Lewisville by amending fees related to municipal court credit card convenience fees and authorizing existing fees as presented, providing for repeal or severability and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Council, if you'd please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Item ten, consideration of five appointments to the city's two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five charter review commissions. The city charter requires the city council to appoint a charter review commission composed of five citizens of the City of Lewisville in July every fifth year. The last charter review was done in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. This commission is required to consist of five citizens. It's recommended that the city council consider appointments to the city's two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five charter review commission as set forth in the caption above. I think there's some comments or questions here, so we'll go ahead and, Councilmember Kelly, might I want to start on the far end down there?
This is, this is very tough. There's everybody on here, I wish we had one for everybody. I look at the folks that I know and their contributions to the city so far, and it makes it even harder. John Deal, fantastic, out in, out in Castles. Guy Harris, Colleen Richard, Karen Locke, everybody on here is hard, hard to pass anybody up. If I had to, Mayor, would you like me to give my five opinions at this juncture, or would you like to proceed?
One more time?
Would you like me to give the five names that I?
If you have, if you want to go that route, we can go that route. That's easy enough.
Okay, if that's the process, we'll follow that. So, I would like to put forth, again, it's tough, but Guy Harris, Russell Kerbo, James McClinton, Audra Smolinski, and Dean Euclid would be my, my selections.
I had Guy, Russ, James, Audra. What was your fifth?
Dean.
Dean, thank you. Got it. All right. We'll keep moving down. Councilmember Jones?
Okay, I agree with, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Kelly. The all great, all great candidates. My selection, I agree with Russ Kerbo, Mayor Euclid. My, my, my other three would be James McClinton, Karen Locke, and Stephen Southwell.
Ms. Gade?
I don't know how you can pick out of all these. I know that I wanted to get John Dial in there, and Mayor Euclid, for sure. I can go with all the rest of them that, I'm flexible at this point because we can't go wrong with this group. But can we just expand the number?
Well, this is something that they can talk about in the charter review.
That's something that they can talk about, yeah.
All right, so Ronnie, I've only got you for two?
Yep.
Okay. William?
All right, I'm going to go with Russ Kerbo, Karen Locke, Audra, Steve Southwell, Dean Euclid.
Do we have who's got what? Who's keeping a tally?
I am.
Okay.
Might as well be good for something.
You should, you should. Practice that now.
Bob, what do you got?
Well, I agree with everything that has been said as far as it's almost impossible to pick, but I will, I will go with Russ Kerbo, Karen Locke, Audra Smolinski, Stephen Southwell, and Dean Euclid.
All right, I'm going to do some tabulation here real quick, if you don't mind. All right, you sure you don't want to throw some extra votes in here, Ronnie? All right, so as, as stands now, I've got, Dean, of course, has got five votes here, so, Mayor Euclid.
I'm not voting.
I'm sorry, suggestions, comments, let's go that route because we are not voting until we're voting. So, Russell Kerbo had five mentions, Karen Locke, Steve Southwell, Audra Smo had three, James Childress had two, and John and Guy had one, so I'm going to make.
I think James Childress is the town manager of Flowerman.
I'm sorry, wrong, wrong James. My apologies, my apologies. Yes, absolutely. My snafu, I'll own that. I'm going to put in my two cents on this one. I think James was outstanding on the Blue Ribbon Committee. He's also got a lot of municipal background in history, so I, I would love to see him make it on that board, if at all possible. I appreciate Karen Locke, but she's on everything. So, I, I, at this point, if I had to pick between, you know, Karen, Steve, and Audra, I'd be, I'd be recommending Steve on that. He's been on the, on there a little bit. I think this will be, would be his third one that I'm aware of, and so he'd give some history and some integrity along with, with Dean Euclid on that. I think James gives some fresh eyes. And then I would love to see John or Guy as, as fresh eyes as well if, if we've got Russ Kerbo as, as the other one because he obviously had four mentions. So, I'll entertain some discussion on that.
I'll, I'll jump in first here. So, again, Guy, John, and Colleen, all fantastic folks, are all neighbors of mine out, out in the Castle Hills area. I will tell you, I've worked with Guy for twelve years on water district things, and I know Guy has an attention for details, and I say John and Karen, Colleen, don't, I just didn't work with them closely, but I know Guy has an attention for detail and reads everything that puts in front, is put in front of me, questions. I think he'd be a great addition, so I would, I would advocate Guy marginally over John or Colleen, but any of those three would do great. Guy just gets a bind nose.
Fair enough. Other comments?
I'm good with Guy Harris and James McClinton. That breaks a tie.
Okay. There's no tie because we haven't voted.
Suggestions?
Yeah, right.
I have suggestions.
Bob, Ronnie, Brandon, any other comments? So based on what I'm seeing here, I'm looking at Dean Euclid, Russ Kerbo, James, Guy, and If there's no other comments or discussion on that, I'll entertain a motion. Dean, Russ, James, Steve, and Guy.
I'll make a motion to recommend Russ, Guy Harris, James, Steve Southwell, Dean Euclid. Is that right?
That's five. All second. All right, I have a motion and a second. Council, please vote. I think all those in favor, oh, no, we have a yay. There we go. That's, motion approved, five to nothing. All right, well, thank you. The, this board is intense, takes up a lot of time in a very short window, and we look forward to the insight and the reviews, and are there things that we need to change or modify in our city charter? Of course, any of those decisions would come through council, at which point we would put them up to election for next May. That also means, you know, if you're a council or junkie and you're watching this on YouTube, and you go read the city charter, maybe there's something in there, you're like, why do we do this? Who knows? Another fresh pair of eyes might find a, make a comment or something like that. You can always send that to this committee and, and they will measure it and make recommendations. So, thank you for your time, and thank you for the five that have been chosen. Again, these were nine amazing folks. We really appreciate you, and thank you for putting your name in the, in the hat, so. All right, with that, where am I? We are on reports. So these will be reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. Councilmember Jones, you mind if we start with you?
Not at all. So I'll go through my quarterly ad- application for the Lewis, City of Lewisville, our Lewisville, Texas app. We're seeing a lot of people use it a lot more, which is great. There's a newer feature, I'm not, I'm not sure if it's new, but I just discovered it this week where it, you can actually see the request in your surrounding area. Actually, you can see it throughout the city. So you can see if you're looking, if you're going to file a request, whether it's been filed already. So you can see what's going on in your neighborhood, you can file the request, and you can watch it and monitor it. They're very fast. I use the app every, at least once a week, so I know my NRO is about tired of me, but it's a great app. You know, I hear people saying, well, they called, they've emailed. We can't track that, but if you have, if you have your request, we can track it and see what's going on and get you, get you an answer back. So, our City of Lewisville, Texas app, get it downloaded on your phone. I know it's working on, on Apple, and it should be working on, on the Google phones as well. That's all I have, Mayor.
They're called Android phones and.
Whatever. Is, is Apple and the rest of them?
I hear you, though. Now I know, now I know where you're at. Councilmember Kate?
Yeah, I would just like to say first off. I just turned this thing back on too. It's been off the whole time. Is that whoever does facilities, I, I, I want y'all to know I did real good because this spider just come walking right across here. I don't, I'm not quite sure where it went, but I did not go over like I was thinking about, or in her lap. I would just, it's getting hot outside, and I just got my electric bill. It's a mortgage payment, and not a small mortgage payment. And I came across this, for those that are in need, there is a program called Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program that will provide financial assistance to help with energy costs, payment help, avoiding late fees and so on. And to get the information, all you have to do is dial two one one, two one one. So if you're needing help out there, because it's kind of hard to survive in Texas, we were talking about the cicadas or what we call the rattlesnakes in the trees because it's, you know, too hot for them to stay on the ground, and you need some help, two one one. That's it.
City Manager? William?
Yes, I've got some library activities for the week. Teens versus adults trivia for age thirteen and up, Thursday, July eighteenth, six thirty to seventeen, at the Bennett Program Room. Registration is required. It's a battle of the brains, who will reign supreme? I might have to attend this. Cowpoke Party for children age three to six with a caregiver, Friday, July nineteenth, ten to eleven a.m. at the Bennett Program Room. A ticket is required, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Troyer?
I have a number of things for the Grand Theater. First of all, performances, newsies presented by the Christie New Theater of DFW, July twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, and twenty-eighth, and as always, the acoustic jam sessions on Friday evenings from six to nine, presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville. Activities, we have activities in the plaza, yoga in the plaza presented by Blue Unju Studio on Wednesdays, bodyweight boot camp presented by Case Cortez on Thursdays, Tai Chi in the plaza presented by Lowell Johnson on Saturdays, and Pilates in the plaza presented by Audrey Green Red Deer on Saturdays. And we have one exhibition going on right now, and that is Cowboys and Critters presented by the Visual Art League of Lewisville, and that runs from July thirteenth through August twenty-fourth, and that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. City Secretary? City Attorney? Richard?
No report, Mayor. Just a reminder that next week on Wednesday, July twenty-fourth, we have our ribbon cutting ceremony for the Windhaven Parkway Underpass, and our plans are to actually open it to traffic later that day.
Very exciting. Lake level?
Lake level, we're still above a hundred percent. We're at, it is dropping, though. We're at five twenty-five point seven two as far as the elevation. One other quick thing, I just wanted to let you know, we are starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel on the brush collection. I'm hopeful that we will finish this week. What we will do, our plan is to send a notification out to the public. Once we finish that, that collection, give them some contact info that if they think they've been missed, or if they have been missed, they can contact us, and we will give, we're going to give the residents a week to get those notifications into us, and then we'll go back by and clean everything that we, get all those last residences that we missed, so.
That's great. Appreciate that. Thank you. Jim?
I used all my words already.
You used them already? Okay, very much.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Chief?
Not a small concern to our police department. We'll welcome over fifteen hundred firefighters to Lewisville beginning next week for the firefighter summer games. So opening ceremonies are on Sunday. Our softball team will use that as a warm-up time for Battle of the Badge, and we'll be ready to go, so.
Chief? Rebuttal?
We're not afraid of the fire department. We, we have nothing more to add, thank you.
Outstanding. I want to remind folks about water usage this time of year. It's, it's always big on my brain, but we've got a wonderful graphic that's been showing up on social media. Thank you, guys, for showing us that. Oh, I skipped Patrick again, didn't I?
Sorry. I have a report this time.
I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm just, it's, yeah, it's just my fault. I'll just own it.
Councilwoman Green isn't here today, so I'm just, I'm orphans by myself.
Well, if I could have, if I could have jumped you, skipped you both, that would have been icing on the cake.
So, real quick, so we have Duck Derby, that is Saturday, this coming Saturday at twelve thirty, Sun Valley Aquatic Center, that's correct, Stacy, fantastic, right? It's always, I'm going to miss it this year, but it's always a lot of fun. I think we sold out this year, right? No more ducks left? So you can come watch, but, but the ducks are all sold out. Battle of the Badge has been mentioned a couple times here, so that is a lot of fun. We have been out for the past couple of years. It's, it's a great time.
Are you emceeing that?
I, I think so. I think I've been asked to do that again, so me, brother and myself, so it's a, you know, second tier talent doing the emceeing this year, but it's okay. It'll be fun. The, that's in October, but we are taking applications for vendor, vendor sponsorship, things like that, so go out and Lewisville site and look for that as well.
And then I also want to take and give a second for the Art, Art Texas Louisville app. You can also use a web link out there, if you look for Art, Art Louisville Texas online, you can actually submit via web application as well. That is the best way to submit, a second, what, what Councilman Jones has said, that's the best way to submit, and that's everything I have, Mayor.
Thank you. So, back to water. We're running at about 70%, 78% of our capacity, which does not seem like we've got, or it seems like we've got a lot, but it doesn't take much. It takes a water break, and suddenly we're in, we're in deficit mode. So, want to encourage folks again to follow the posted watering. If you don't know what that is, hit the city website, you can find out how that works. Hand water as much as you can, and consider using natives this fall when your lawn is a dead and scorched mess, which it will be. Consider using natives in, in the fall to plant them so that they'll be ready to handle this next year. If you have questions about water conservation, you can absolutely reach out to city staff. There's programs for low water usage tools like toilets and sinks. If you want to apply for that, you can get money back, so there's lots of ways that you can help keep that water number down. One of the comments I heard on social media was, well, why didn't you just plan for the excess water usage? And that effectively means we have to, we have to buy water in million gallon tranches, so chunks, and once you pay that number, you get it forever. So, we pay Dallas for forever for that treated water that we get from them, or we pay for the treatment materials that we need. So, that water, because it's negotiated between all the cities that pull from the lake, at some point, there won't be more water to be able to buy in those tranches. So, for us to just conveniently pay for two or three more million on the off chance that we might need it, doesn't seem very fiscally conservative when we can all do a little bit to save a lot. So, that's, that's the reason we do it this way. It's, our water system is incredibly well planned, in fact, it has to be planned out by law at least 25 years in advance. So, that's why you see some of these bonds going on to start building the next segment of our water treatment plant. So, appreciate everybody's help, it's, it's a community, we all need to work together on this one. So, with that, I think we're done with reports. We do not have any more workshop information, and we do not have a closed section. So, since there is no further action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we stand adjourned.